On this episode of that Kingsville Podcast, Greater Essex County District School Board trustee Julia Burgess joins us for everything introspective about the new K to 12 school in Kingsville. Kevin, Steve and I ask her every one of the questions we can remember to ask her while she's here because there's been a ton of questions, a ton of controversy, a ton of rumors about this new school, what its name is, what it's going to have, what's happening, when it's going to open, is there enough space, all that and more on this episode of that Kingsville Podcast. That Kingsville Podcast proudly supported by Kingsville Brewery and Tap House 127. Unfortunately renovations still ongoing at the Tap House. Been awhile, but it looks like they've been making progress as posted on social media.
Burst pipe?
Burst pipe happens. So it's tragic that it's closed it down, but we're hopeful that it opens soon. But in the meantime, visit their website kingsvillebrewery.com, check out the local brews, the menu for the restaurant. Hopefully it might change by the time it opens. I know the culinary staff.
Yummy beer though.
Yeah. Delicious, delicious beer. Again, thank you.
And lemonade.
Yeah. Oh yes. All the le- oh my gosh, that's so good. Pink lemonade is delicious. And then the Hop 2 O, hop water, you know, if we were doing Dry January.
Hop 2 O with Dave.
Hi. Thank you, Kingsville Brewery for supporting that Kingsville Podcast.
I do Dry January retrospectively.
Yeah, I do it, you know, from the hours of eight AM till six PM. All bets are off. Welcome to that Kingsville Podcast. I'm your host, Dave Hunt, Kim Black, Steve Anson. Special guest with us this week, School Board Trustee Julia Burgess. Thanks for coming on the show, Julia.
My pleasure.
Oh, it's almost spring. It's almost spring. Days are getting longer.
Yes.
You know, it was almost daylight when I coming into the studio tonight.
Not when I got here.
No, no.
Had a little tiny little bit of winter this afternoon.
Yeah, but it was fleeting. It's gone. You know, just like that's, that's what Kingsville.
Reminding us that it's still, still there.
Yeah. Julia, you've been a fixture in the community for, you know, as long as you've been here, it's, you know, and you've been a Greater Essex County District School Board trustee since 2000?
2000, December 2000, I got elected. So 2001 was my first, like, you know, working year.
Congratulations. That's.
Seven elections.
Yeah, that is a longstanding record of elections. Got a track record with that. So a lot, lot going on in our local community with schools and which I'm sure we'll get into it, but over those 20 some odd years, I'm sure you've seen a lot of change. And with the recent direction about where the change is going, tell me about that first year that you were, you know, new to the trustee. Why did you want to become elected? Why did you volunteer? Why did you run?
I wasn't a one issue trustee candidate. There were some that year. That year we had a three year term. The next term in 2003 was a three year term. It was the Harris government turning into the Harris Eaze government, a lot of cutbacks. Bill 160 had come removing principals and vice principals from the union. Funding formula came in, taxation abilities for school boards were removed. School boards were amalgamated in 1998. So what used to be the Essex County Board of Education became the Greater Essex. There were four trustees in the county, six in the city. Very different cultures in both school boards. My husband was a teacher. I had to really think about it because I was in conflict of interest with anything with negotiations for the first 10 years until he retired. So I concentrated on curriculum, facility services, wellness. You know, academic things, sports, anything to do with not negotiations. And it was a fractious time, 2000.
And talking about negotiations for, for that period, period of 10 years, Edfo, the Elementary Teachers Federation was using this region as the barometer for the rest of the province in the negotiations.
Well, and to be fair, if you look at the labor history for the region, particularly in Windsor and unionization, et cetera, we have a, we have a well earned reputation, right? To have, you know, organized, you know, employment, et cetera, and unions, good federations, fights for working conditions, all of those things. So that's part of the ethos. That's in the water. People already expect that. People who come from outside and come here and go, whoa, you really got strong. You're representative. We just think of it, that's we have representatives, you know, so, but working that, that working relationship has always been here. So in those days, you remember we were just coming out of like social contract and ratings and all of that. And as a school board, losing taxation and having your funding, somebody else holding your purse strings, managing well, how you were going to do that. 80% of our budget is wages. 80% of collect that are collective agreements. So you've got 20% that you can actually make a real difference with. You can make it in the human resources and the people that you have, the great staff, but you don't have any flexibility when you're looking at now provincially bargained collective agreements.
And that, that 20%, does that include capital or is capital separate?
Capital is a totally different budget.
Separate.
Yeah, that's the operating, 80% of the operating.
Right. And then, and just because we're going to get, obviously get into a huge capital project, but so people understand capital is applied for, and correct me if I have this wrong, please. Applied for by the school board and then the Ministry of Education approves it and then approves your, your capital spending, right?
Sort of, yeah. We have to submit for capital projects in many, many ways, and they have to be rubber stamped and approved by the ministry at lots of levels. But the, it's like a cyclical thing. So I could start with saying, what are our capital priorities? So give me 10 things, you know, and oh gosh, this roof, this roof has been waiting for six years, you know, and the, the library is getting wet and this is else has been ruined and like it's got to jump up. I'm sorry, but with this parking lot and I'm sorry, we need six new classrooms and we have, so we always have maintenance things, capital projects ongoing to keep schools safe and clean and warm and inviting. Or cool. But then we also have, you know, renewal. We need to, you know, it's like your house. We have 70 houses, 70 residences, 70 places where huge amount of kids, 36,000 kids are going every day. So how do we, you look after every window, floor and wall, you know, every boiler, every toilet, every whatever. It's a big thing. So we have a great facility services. But it's always being prioritized. So we submit our capital priorities as far as builds, rebuilds, additions goes. And I have to say in our school board, we have a great track record. We have a great business department and they put the best business case they can forward. We have a above average kind of return on saying, yeah, that's a good business case. We'll fund that. They might fund number one, seven and eight. But we got three. You know, and then when it comes to big builds, you know, you're talking about consolidating schools, you know, closing schools, two into one, eventually six into one. That's a much harder process and those approvals come first that, oh, you know, we have to know what we want, what, what the prediction of growth will be. Do we have a site? Some sites are very urban, very close to have a small footprint. Can we actually rebuild? Do we need to move this school? Can we do it on the site? And then we have to have a space template approved. We didn't know whether we were going to get all the tech rooms at North Star, which was the consolidation of Western and General Airways. You can imagine somebody who was had great pride in Western Secondary School and the facilities that were there phenomenal.
Fantastic.
Go to a school with. What? We're not going to have, what? Wait a minute, that wasn't the deal, you know? So we actually had to approve it, the capital plan and the actual design. So we get the template. We say, this is what we want. They go, you know, square footage. I don't know. That's a little more expensive. Tech rooms take more than different floors, different electrical. And we finally got it, but we were like on tenterhooks, wondering if we were actually going to get that auto and that thing, you know, so.
When you say they, who's they?
Ministry. They hold the, I look at them as the banker. They're the banker. It's not their money, it's our money. We pay our money. I just got my taxable the other day, right? There's the education levy there and, you know, we pay that and then we paid your general taxes because the education level is, education levy is never enough to actually fund a school board. It has to be, it has to come from general finance. So the Ministry of Finance tops it up. And then sends it back to us. So we're withdrawing our own money and they're the banker and they're kind of going, I don't know. I don't know if I'd like to have that withdrawal. You know, so we're always saying, wait a minute, though we need it. Believe me, we know that this development is coming. We'd like to have a bigger school. We actually know. The permits are like, these developers are good. The permits are coming. Yes, but the people aren't in the building, so they don't exist. So we're always, you know, back and forth, back and forth. It's a frustrating process, but it is what we have to deal with and that's how we deal with the funding. So our budget process is just starting. Anybody watching or listening? Please come and let us know what your priorities are. Because last time I checked, I'm not telepathic. You know, we think we know, we do our best, but you know, then some roof caves in and, you know, things get reprioritized.
When you're doing school consolidations, how much of those consolidation and, and I like, I know that there's a public process, but how much of those decisions are based around? We know the ministry won't approve a school if we don't consolidate at least this many schools to cut it. Cause I, I know in other public sector areas, there's always a thought of what do we have to do to make sure that the ministry will give us the green light? And usually there's a set of, 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 of points that you know that that ministry is going to be looking for and you need to be able to check off.
Well, which government, which minister, which capital finance branch? Which?
Yeah.
It's a deck of cards. It's constantly changing. Economies change. Priorities even in all, in the acceptability for taxes to go up or down. If you ask somebody locally, do you love your school? Do you love your teachers? Do you love, you know, do you have great pride in your community? Oh, yes, yes, yes. Well, if, if you had to put your hand in your pocket for this much more in order to make this thing work, would you? Oh yes, I think I would. I think I'd organize a fundraiser. I'd do something, right? But if you said, would your taxes go up the same amount? To fund the very same thing and actually spread it across all public education supporters and maybe even save you some money. Oh, I don't want my taxes to go up, you know? So it's an understanding that we're all kind of in this together and we all benefit from something, but the business case is a human endeavor like any, like any transaction, you have to put your best case forward. And as I said, I think we're very good at that. I think we don't ask for the moon. We ask for something really concrete. That's really going to show some benefit to, to students and learning and resources and making it safe and making it clean and making it new and taking something that is going to cost us. You know what it's like? You've got a furnace. It's just on the edge. You know what I mean? And the heat wave is coming and the air conditioner is going to die any minute. And you have to say, do I buy it now? Do I wait for the sale? Do I have a month of misery? Or do I, you know, you have to, you have to figure it out when the best time is and we make, we put our best business cases and it depends case by case by case. There's just not one way to do it. But I think the fact that we're successful at it, I think that we know what's reasonable and I think we prioritize well, and we really look at our budget with great scrutiny.
So getting into the new school, speaking of, speaking of capital projects.
Yeah.
So.
Is this wood?
Trust me.
I don't know if you, I don't, I don't know if you've seen, but there, there is a building now, which is exciting.
I have my steel toe shoes and I don't have my hard hat anymore, but I'm getting one because I saw some pictures the other day and I thought, no, no, I gotta get in now. I gotta get in.
So how are we, how are we on timeline?
Great. And that's a, it's a miracle, you know, it really is because, well, I don't think there is. Not only is it the most expensive project in the province right now, like there probably will be more because the inflationary things, they realize that they have to catch up on inflationary costs, even from something that was approved five years ago. Just the, you know, we forget about the supply chain backlog that we were in this a couple of years ago, where every ship was out at sea and nothing was moving. We always had an approach that we would receive the steel, we would receive this at a certain time. We didn't have to store it. We didn't have to have security around storing it. We didn't have to worry about, you know, things going missing from a construction site to insuring it, whatever. Our contractors, our suppliers made sure it was sort of just in time. We stopped doing that during the pandemic because if we didn't secure prices, availability and actual delivery, we could have waited two more years. So that would have been great for me to go out to the community and say, guess what, guys? Two more years. How long has it been? I lost count.
What the public doesn't realize too, with some of those raw materials, you were fighting against all of the organizations that we were depending on getting through the pandemic, right? Amazon and Walmart and all of these distribution warehouses went up to facilitate all of the need for us, which competed against projects like, like the school, because all of that steel, all of that equipment went towards whoever the highest bidder was.
Every, every silicon chip.
Yeah, but it goes down to like two by fours too. Like it goes down to that kind of a granular level. Everything was up for bids.
Everything. Of PPE.
Yeah. Oh geez.
We deployed like 30 something thousand devices when we were, our board had the longest, our area, not our board. Our area had the longest lockdown out of anybody.
Oh, we're aware.
Well, that meant those devices, that IT staff that had to be augmented, every device cleaning, every device being deployed fixed. I can't get in, I can't, you know? It was an enormous, enormous effort and I mean, they're writing books now about it, you know? We're looking back with some analysis. It was amazing.
So the school is, the school were, were on track.
Yep, sorry. Yep.
Oh no, it's okay. When are we, when's it opening?
September 24. Yeah, this September.
This upcoming September.
This September. And we just announced today that unlike the other years for decades, kindergarten will start the same day as the rest. We just announced that today. That's a logistical thing and we looked at that very clearly and.
That seems like it's going to be mayhem on the first day at a new school.
Isn't the first day a little bit of mayhem anyway?
Oh, it's mayhem for everyone though this time around. You got, you got four feeder schools now and yeah, all in one, one shot, new place.
Yep.
New teachers.
New bus routes.
New bus routes.
New walking routes, new active transportation routes, new teachers, new courses, new childcare spaces, new dismissal times.
Dismissal times. Oh.
Yeah. Staggered dismissal and arrival. So elementary, secondary, childcare will all be a little different.
And then there's going to be enough room for all of the currently enrolled students.
Is this real wood?
We're hopeful.
We have enough spaces built for all the predictions that we made with a little bit of room. I also heard that we have one of the highest grade nine enrollments cat, you know, there's, kids can go anywhere they want, you know, there's four school boards, especially when you're offering dual track French immersion. And so until everybody shows up on Sept- in September, we won't honestly know. Kindergarten registration starts soon too, February 21st. That has changed remarkably, but that has been well before the pandemic. You know, it used to be that everybody came on the night to register, you know, kindergarten and then you had like a week or so, and then it became a day in the life in a month. Now, kids just show up, you know, people register the kids in late August, you know, it's just continuous intake. So we're hoping that people take advantage and actually sign up for kindergarten. So we can predict and staff correctly, you know, instead of scramble, but we won't ever know until September, how many in each area show up.
Has, is the board looking for portables?
I think the board has portables, is always looking for portables. The last time I checked, the company that, somebody told me that there wasn't a monopoly now, but I haven't checked that out. There was a monopoly. There's one company, one company.
Really?
Interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah, it seems like, seems like someone needs to get into the portable.
I've been saying that for years.
Start my own business, potent portables.
Potent portables?
Oh.
Wasn't that a Jeopardy topic?
Portables, yeah.
I don't get the, I don't get the geese.
Yeah, it was.
No, no. There you go. There you go.
Yeah.
So the, the other major kind of.
Will they have them on day one is your question or no?
Well, I, yeah, maybe, will they have them on, will they have them on day?
Three? I don't know.
Five.
I guess that's just it. I mean, are we, are we looking, I mean, the numbers, you mentioned the grade nine class coming in. So you're aware of that, obviously.
The principal shared that at a, at a public meeting.
Are we, is there the potential, the very realistic potential that there could be portables on site by the end of September?
A very real.
You know what, I'm gonna say no. It could be one, it could be five, but.
I'm going to say no, but I honestly, honestly don't know. I honestly don't know. Our predictions were predicated on a snapshot pre pandemic when we got the okay for that space template and that build. We haven't built more classrooms. If you remember though, and I don't know if you watched it or, you know, you were interested, but during that period where we were approving the design, I was trying to amend some designs. I was trying to amend for more money. I was trying to say this is, don't cut design. We need to go back to the ministry. My colleagues didn't see that. They, my colleagues didn't support that thankfully. Administration thought kind of a little else ways and went to capital finance and tried anyway and got it. So I'm okay with that, you know? My colleagues didn't say, oh wow, we were, you know, but we were happy. But the, it didn't make for more classrooms. It only made, it only addressed the inflationary costs from the time of the estimates to the actual building, delivering the same darn thing. So did I ask, where did the portables go? I asked that because you can't have something that is announced five ministers of education ago, and this guy's been there, what, for five years? Since Liz Sandals, like 2016 or whatever. And even before that, you can't, you can't say that Kingsville and Harrow and everywhere hasn't grown. I mean, and I know our demographic is higher than normal. Like we have a lot of retirees. Ours is skewed compared to other school catchment areas. French immersion pandemic really hit French immersion because a lot of parents couldn't support during lockdown their kids to keep at an academic level that, you know, have expectations over a year or two. So that, that took a hit, but it's back. You know, it's back because everybody else is back. So you know what the enrollment will be? I mean, it's, it's unprecedented and I know that's an overused word, but we're trying our best.
I think a lot of the concern too, is with some of the, the K to 12 schools that have been built over the past couple of decades, right? And their challenges and they, the, let's call it quote unquote, lessons learned about when building this and how we account for it. Kingsville was given that unfortunate yet unique opportunity to make those adjustments because the project got delayed through the pandemic. So that's the major concern is that do we, do we ignore that ability to adjust and still kind of, you know, tread it very strongly through and we will force it through and end up in a similar situation as some of the other.
Like Tecumseh Vista.
Vista was like, was that not the flagship of the board? Was Vista?
So I guess this is where I insert the caveat and say that, you know, Julia Burgess here.
Yeah.
Yes, of course, Julia.
You know, I mean, I, I vote, I understand, you know, I don't speak on behalf of the board. I, I didn't vote for the approval of the design for Vista. We had a first design that was spectacular. And because we had purchased, we had built David Suzuki, there was a change in ministry. We had ministry of finance money for that because it was a spectacular lead platinum school, et cetera. We were trying to employ passive, fabulous, sustainable design into that, you know, I remember, you know, it might was kind of like, I brought earth tunnels to David Suzuki because I saw it somewhere else at the Court Right Center, you know? We, we should be doing some of these things at every school. We should have, you know, geothermal. I have my own opinions and they're, they're often very ignored, you know, but can we, can we look back and say, have we done the best? I don't know. Tecumseh Vista. When I was looking for a solution for K to 12, and it, and it was a, a thing that I took on is because I get elected in two towns. Two towns that post amalgamation in 98 are called Essex and Kingsville. And when I went back, when I was very new, I went back to minutes to 1985 Essex County Board of Education and saw that they were trying to close Harrow High since 85. And I followed the minutes. Who was at the meeting? Who was at the thing, semestering, de semester, all these things. And I, and I thought, well, there's three schools in Harrow and we can't afford three principals, the custodial staff, the three boilers, the three roofs, the three secretarial, the three, you know what I mean? So they knew that there was an efficiency that they needed to see in Harrow. A beloved junior school, beloved senior school. Punched way above their weight in bursary scholarships, pathways, et cetera, for the small population that Harrow always was. It was never a big school. And it was never really empty. It was just small. But when I was looking for something, a first glimpse of hope I had was Peninsula Shores in Wyerton. It was a prohibitive to repair high school, relatively new kind of, you know, seventies, I think, kind of era, elementary thing. And they made a K to 12 and that's what made sense because they knew they were going to go for a new build, but they still had a small high school. And how do you get the culture across federation panels? How does Edfo work with OSSTF? There might be somebody who can coach an Edfo to a senior level. There might be somebody here that can really do the band or music over here. There might be schisms within the, within the system. There are all kinds of rites of passage. How do you graduate in a building that you're still always in? You know?
Well, we talked about the sports nicknames, right? Like if, if you're, you know, in elementary and you start out as a cavalier, you're a cavalier till you.
Or a vortex, right?
Or, yeah, or a hawk.
Yeah, but a vortex starts off and for 10 years they're a vortex and then they go into high school and they're a vortex. And, and that's great, but some kids at like anybody, like it's a right, there is a thing about age of reason, 13, there's something about, you know, the puberty thing, the adolescent thing that you want to write a passage, you want, you know? So have, your question was, have we learned the lessons? Are we applying the lessons? I'm not sure we have. I'm not sure we have.
I think September is going to be the litmus test of whether or not that, that wasn't observed and critical or used as critical criteria with regards to when this situation arose. Like we had the opportunity, it was voted against, as you've, you've described.
What's voted against?
In order to adjust the school accordingly for, for all the inflationary and or populous.
Just to build the same thing. Yeah.
Just, yeah, right. Just to trudge ahead with what we've got and not adjust and, and, you know, both programming or facility, uh, equipment and.
New design, you mean?
Right. Like they've not, they've not taken the opportunity to, to revamp because that pause was taken. So.
Well, who's they though?
The board.
But if you have a capital project that has been okayed.
Sure.
You have the architect. You gotta pay the architect.
That's correct.
So if you wanted to change, you'd have to pay the architect again. If you wanted to get a new contractor, you'd have to.
My point is doubling down on a bad idea.
Oh, I don't think it's a bad idea. Yeah.
Getting back to, we were talking about portables. We're talking about, right? Facilitating.
Yep.
Uh, what was done and all the studies that were done in the mid teens. 2016, 2017, 2018.
Yeah, but portables weren't in the.
I understand that, but again, the town of Kingsville has grown exponentially between then and now.
So do you think that there could be a world where if, if, if at the end of September, you're, you're thinking, okay, well, we're gonna have to put, and I'm just.
At the end of September, you're asking me for times and I'm honestly.
First school year.
I'm not.
I'm, I'm going to do my go guide one.
I'm not going to.
I promise.
I'm not going to ask for times.
I just honestly don't know.
But I'm, I, I want to know, do you think that there's a threshold that could see one of the schools not close?
Well, okay. So now you're asking about a process after what happens when a new school opens and the other ones are declared surplus. So each facility, so Migration Hall is part of KDHS. I don't know if it has a separate MyDent, which is a ministry identification, I don't think so. But I know, I know of situations on other boards and whatever, there's been land severed, different things. Now we're into a whole new regulation that is untried. We used to have one, well, we've had many over the 24 years. We used to, we used to convey for a dollar.
Yes.
Yeah.
When everybody was realized that, you know, we're kind of the same taxpayer, like really, honestly, do I have to buy my own stuff? You know? But so KDHS will be declared surplus. Jack Minor will be declared surplus. KPS will be declared surplus. At what date? I don't know. We've had properties that we thought, well, we're not going to declare that surplus because you know what? We got to move all this stuff somewhere and we'll just use it for storage. We'll use it for some other reason. Okay. We're going to delay that one. Will they all come up at the same time? I don't know, but I know as of. But I know as of September, because you have to open the other one, you have to gain occupancy before the others are declared surplus. And then it's very prescriptive process. This new regulation, I honestly don't know enough about it. I advocated for it. I met with MPPs. I went to Queens Park. I, I, I honestly tried my hardest to convince folks that, you know, this is punitive when we have, we are forced to sell for the highest market value to municipalities who are also struggling with their budgets and whose taxpayers in some way have also supported these facilities.
Is one of the things that you could store at Jack Minor students?
Yeah. Of course. None of them are prohibitive to repair.
Right.
None of them are prohibitive to repair. They are maybe more expensive and we would still have to do the, you know, maybe we wouldn't have to do the sewage because, because that came on with full day kindergarten, you know, with the extra bathrooms. If certain bathrooms aren't used or whatever, then the capacity changes and we meet post Walkerton, you know, criteria. You know, and KPS, would you want to? I mean, that place is needed repair.
Oh geez, no.
Come on.
Yeah. And so, no, I'm just gonna tie into that. So I don't know how big the land is and how big the vacant land is that the new school is sitting on. But if, I mean, if, okay, so.
I don't think it's big enough.
Is the possibility, A, that an additional facility could be built on that property? You know, maybe looking at one or two, three, four, five years down the road where the board realizes, hey.
Let's be realistic.
We don't have.
Are you saying an extension of classrooms?
Yeah, exactly. Okay. Or B, is there only enough room to put athletic facilities, which we know is not covered in the funding from the province?
Athletic facilities, meaning?
Like a track.
Soccer field, track. You know, similar to what, what Leamington has, Cardinal Carter has, you know, pretty much every other high school in the area.
These are all hypotheticals and I honestly don't know, you know, board never gets money for playgrounds, let alone tracks. So that's never in the budget. So that has to be sponsored. The only one that ever got that was TVA because TVA came under budget. We actually had to spend the budget. The original design was two, maybe three floors. I was hoping for something that was like that, a smaller footprint and an opportunity to have foundations where we could go up with an addition rather than out, therefore not taking the larger footprint. That didn't, I, that didn't, and the ministry, that didn't fly and the ministry doesn't, that's more expensive upfront. The capital is up, you know, more expensive upfront. But again, if you put that in place, it's like any renovation. If you actually put it in place first, you know, you get your electrically, get all the other stuff, then the renovation is actually cheaper in the medium term. But governments look sometimes in election cycles and finances, you know, budgets are every year. GSNs, the grants for student needs are something we take for granted, but they're actually an annual really annually renewed thing. They're not guaranteed. So when we look at that stuff, could there, could there be a, a, a property saved just at the side? Well, you know, the original thing that we put out, if, if you remember the original park, there were two, three, if you count all the ones in Harrow, maybe more than that, but were a seven and eight school, middle school at Jack Minor, I think. I think that was one of the proposed things, right?
Six, seven, eight or seven, eight.
Yeah. So all the seven eights from all the people went there and then, you know, the other ones were the K to six or that was, you know, whatever. And so there's any possibility for, you know, occupancy at any of the buildings. It's just, I honestly think that in September, we're going to find a comfortable building. I don't think it'll be, we need portables the first year. Will we need portables eventually? Well, if people keep coming to this, you know, lovely area and the area that is the catchment area, which is my gosh, you know, from Malden to Cotum to, you know, to Leamington and Pele Island, you know, maybe there's, you know, who knows? Who knows? Honestly?
So just, just sticking with the athletic side of it, Vista's beautiful turf field and track was covered through the ministry spend.
Original budget.
Okay. That's incredible. So therefore, and then Leamington had a generous sponsor come forward.
Correct. Totally different situation.
Is there anything, anything in the lines, anything? Cause we, there, there are rumors out there that, that there have been offers made and I mean, part of, part of the, not just the high school experience, but the school experience for a lot of people is either participating in athletics or going to athletics or supporting the teams.
I remember going to Essex for Essa and Swassa, right?
Well, then you guys are all athletes.
You can tell.
You know, even from a spectator sport, I don't care.
But so.
But there's an emphasis. So.
Is there anything available for, for Kingsville? Has anybody come forward to say, hey, you know what?
I, I will tell you that I've heard the same rumors. I think, and I try not to operate on rumors and innuendo until I honestly see face to face and see some contract and have it signed and have, you know, it checked out.
Been presented to the board.
I think probably things have been presented to the board, but I'm not in a position where anybody would present anything to me, you know? In order for trustees to see it, it would have to jump through enough hoops of credibility. Checking out that we have, we have regulations around that too, right? You know, when Nature Fresh came in, for example, and for Leamington, that was very generous, et cetera, but there are conditions, you know, people want something for it, you know, whether it's signing or a term or, you know, it's like a lease almost, right? So it's, it's a, all the lawyers get paid.
Well said.
You know, and so is there a possibility? Yes. I think there's some great benefactors in our areas, you know, I mean, all the municipality, I mean, look at Atlas too, does it in Lakeshore, you know? I mean, there are some fabulous benefactors, really generous people that would love to see their, not only their kids and grandchildren, but the community benefit. Now, we're right next to some great facilities of the town of Kingsville. No, I'm serious.
No, no, okay. I.
Sandwich, you know, and Essex. No, but Essex.
No, if you look, if you look at the field, okay. So I've, I mean, I've coached soccer for many years. I've seen what Essex has. I've seen what Sandwich has. I've seen what all these schools have. The soccer fields in Kingsville, while many do not drain well.
They're good for, for casts at the hospital though.
They're great. They're great for the hospital.
You've got, you've got a turf field of Vista. You've got Essex who, who, you know, and I get it. It's used for football also, but they have these really good facilities. To me, um, the current KDHS has, has a much better soccer field than anything that the town has. No, but I'm saying field wise, field wise.
Yeah.
It's better than anything the town has. So I know when Leamington, the new Leamington first opened, they played their games at the old high school. Is that, could that be an option?
Of course, because, of course. Yeah, I think so. It's a matter of, there's a, you know, we belong all, pretty well, all school boards belong to the Ontario School Boards Insurance Exchange, you know? And that covers a lot of, you know, athletic injuries, I'm going to say, because athletics don't come free. They, you have to have really good insurance and stuff. And usually when a, a facility is declared surplus and closed down, I mean, you close it down like a cottage, you know, you just don't want the pipes to freeze. You don't really want the water to egress. You don't want to, you know, you gotta keep the weeds down to a certain level, but you don't keep it to a playing field level. So could however, like at, I'm going to say Sun Parlor School at Essex. Sun Parlor School was the headquarters for the football team when it was closed for many years. It was the food bank, you know, for many years. It could, could the town or someone else use the facility or the school board, keep it open? And, you know, make arrangements for community use, like Migration Hall or any other community use? Yeah, anything's a possibility, a probability. I don't know. We don't know because nothing's surplus yet.
And just one more thing regarding that, like insurance wise too. I mean, what is, you know, is the school board have to then pay the town in Kingsville to use those facilities if KPS, well, let's say KPS jacket with the elementary school. I'm still thinking, the elementary school, you know, they want to play their soccer games. Is there, is there an insurance? Is there a liability? Is there a cost for that to the town where by just accepting a generous donation, those costs are eliminated?
To the town where? Costs to the town where?
So is there, is there a cost? Does the, is, does the school board have to pay the town in some way or form to use their facilities?
Like the arena or the?
Yes, the soccer fields. Right. So if we.
And, and that can be anything that, that happens across all nine municipalities.
And they, they use the tennis courts, they use the ice. I understand that, but this would be an additional cost for, for soccer fields.
Anything can be arranged.
Okay.
So, so the team, the swim team, they go to the shirk.
Yes.
The curling team, they go to the, you know, when it was a curling team, you know. Yeah, that's right. You know, this golf team, you, you lease facilities, like when we closed pools, pools were sort of a million dollars.
So there could be a cost savings.
Potential, potentially.
Okay.
Well, you know, when your taxes are going towards fitness and wellness, let's be real here. This is, it if wellness is not something that's like, oh, an extra, you know? We pay, how would you like to pay? You know, would you like to pay by maybe paving an active transportation or honestly, honestly encouraging cycling, honestly encouraging walking to school? Or do you want to really put all your money into a kiss and ride and make sure everybody, everybody gets driven, whether it's a block away? You know, if we make these efforts from the town, from the school boards, plural, you know, if we look at C Watts and see that last little bit there and, you know, whatever, chapter nine or whatever, there's a place for everybody to honestly look at it and, and being, and not make it like, oh, I gotta make money on this. It's not like the huge revenue thing. Let's see where we can all benefit. The aquatic center in Essex, that's the town of Essex. It's on school board property, but it's theirs. We lease, there's a lease, it's not going to be around for a lot longer until it gets renewed, you know, but it, it actually found, it, it made the foundation for the building. We had to change the design of the building because the foundation was critical to the aquatic center. I mean, Sandwich, like I said, every track, every pool that got closed and made for another facility at Riverside, you know, at whatever Vista, they're all different.
The new school. It's, it's got new features. It's got new options. It's got a new layout. What are some of the things that it's going to include that maybe we don't have in the existing infrastructure and KDHS and the, and the feeder?
Air conditioning.
Well, hey, that's a big one. That time as a student sweating, you know, trying to learn geography.
In April, May and September on this second floor. And there was a time, of course, KDHS didn't have anybody on the second floor, right? And it was like a physics lesson. Oh yes, right. Heat rises.
Yeah.
This is where the people faint.
Yes. So aside from air conditioning, what else?
Well, lots of light. Now, some of the older buildings, particularly, you know, if you, if you think of it, because Ruthven is gone, right?
Been gone for a while.
Yeah. And Harold Jr. is gone and Harrow High is gone. They all had different facilities that were kind of remarkable. Harrow High was fully accessible. Well, KPS sure isn't.
What, you mean the basement?
Yeah. No, you know, KDHS isn't. You know, for staff, for anybody visiting, for all the students, we have to be very careful. Fully accessible school. That's, that's 2024. Come on. It's took a long time to get there for all of our communities to have access to a fully accessible, comfortably, thermally comfortable, you know, and with good daylighting. We have new regulations for childcare. We've incorporated that into all of our designs for a long time now. It's a bright place. You don't feel like you're in Jack Minor in the windowless room in the middle of the winter where, you know, you're fighting for your vitamin D, you know?
The high school's renowned for the tech zone, right? Through Doug Dewey. Doug, very influential in a lot of people's lives, myself being one of them.
You'll have to come and see him in Arsenic and Old Lace at Migration Hall on March 4th, 2nd and 3rd.
I grew to this.
He's playing Lieutenant Rooney, the New York, the Brooklyn cop. He's very funny.
But, you know, through, through a lot of his efforts and some of his colleagues, through the years, through, at least Steve and my attendance at KDHS, that was a foundation of a lot of, you know, development of those skillsets within our community. So are, are those values and are those facilities being offered at the new school in the same respect? Because also, a lot of the, was it all three of the current teachers at the high school are up for retirement?
Oh, yeah.
So, so are those facilities available at the new school?
To the same square footage, I don't believe. I think that we have more tech there than many high schools that are being built. I was really grateful that we had that and we, we kept that and we weren't on tenterhooks like we were at North Star in order to get that, that was approved because the heritage, the legacy of the tech zone. I mean, and but think about what the tech zone is. It's just this, I could say the same thing about Normie Cannon and Mr. Shelton. You know, I could say the same thing saying, oh, gold medal winner. Oh my God, you came out of Kingsville, you knew music, you know, you could, you had every pathway. You had every pathway. You could go to university, you could go get a great job, you could go into an apprenticeship, you know, you could go to college. And, and that's still true. But what is, there's a, that's a huge can of worms in that, what does the Ontario College of Teachers do? What does our society do to help promote really great tech teachers?
Oh, zero.
Do?
Oh, zero.
Well, how do we attract them?
Well, that's.
Well, the tech teachers came, they come from the workforce.
So I'm not, I don't want to go down this rabbit hole because it's, that, that was my career choice as a student. It was misunderstood about the value of skilled trades.
Yep.
And I don't want to, I don't want to divert because we are only an hour long episode, but yes, you're absolutely correct. How does, how does the ministry, how does the local school boards?
I'm gonna say society.
Society in whole.
You know, when you went to your parent teachers, when you went to whatever, are you saying, oh, but does he have his university courses? Yeah, that's good. But like, are you asking about apprenticeships?
I, I think firmly that because the pendulum swung way too far, that the misunderstanding of the value of, of that is, is coming back in alignment and the technology evolution of automation, computers, et cetera, and its involvement in, in those technical skills is coming in line. So I'm glad to hear that the school is equipping itself with some format of it. I'm hopeful that it can give students, teachers, you know, other people, opportunities to continue the legacy that was built at KDHS tech zone and.
Let's hope it's well staffed.
Hope so.
How much is that? How many billion dollars is that battery plant that's coming? How many, how much construction is there in this area?
14.
What? Really? Oh yeah, the funding was.
Will they need people who are technically skilled?
Yeah, yeah. Chemists, electrical engineers, mechanical engineers, you know, there's only a few of us that.
I mean, we're fools if we don't have it in every school, every school. Why was Tecumseh Vista built without that?
Great questions.
Yeah.
Great questions.
Now, and, and just because they're, and, and I'm going to go off a laundry list, so, so forgive me, but.
We're in the quickfire round?
Cafeteria, no.
No, but a big open area like many others that have an eating area, social, it's thank, thankfully they'll be together and social and not just in their classrooms because this thing over during the lockdown or whatever, our kids need to be together. So, and whether something grows offsite, I think that whoever gets the concession over at the arena will do very well. And anybody who is bringing something in will do very well. And I'm hoping people bring sustainable lunches. We have a family studies area so that we do have a kitchen. We don't have a culinary program, but we do have a separate food preparation in the childcare in early years because they have to eat multiple times. So there are cooking facilities. Is there a commercial cooking?
She got the, the.
I lost that one.
She get the, the food prep people a food truck.
Well.
They're set it up outside.
And I'm a big advocate and have been working really hard on the federal school food program policy, you know, at the Ontario Public School Board Association, and we're taking the lead as a, as a province on the Canadian School Board Association. And we'll be talking about that at our convention again in July. We've talked in Ottawa, we go to Queens Park. This has got to happen. And if it does happen, then that alleviates it from school boards to say, food's important, like food's important in this area.
Yeah.
The fact that we don't have food prep area in the.
Stage?
I think that's the same kind of a design as when I was at Vista last week, for example, seeing an excellent version of Radium Girls. The gym is on one side. You have the stage. So it basically has two prosceniums. You have a, what becomes the upstage becomes the downstage. So the music room and the small theaters and the, the, you know, the instrumental room, it could be even is this side. And then you open up the curtain there and you have the whole gym that can see, you put that curtain up. So it's a dual.
Similar to Leamington?
Yeah.
Yeah, Leamington has a nice.
Yeah, that design, that design has been for at least a decade and almost everyone that we build and they're, you know, the gyms, the gyms meet most criteria, but not all criteria. I think Migration Hall is. the gyms meet most criteria, but not all criteria. I think Migration Hall is still the one that is the only one for Babington? I'm not sure. There's a one that the court space there meets particular court tournament criteria.
And bleachers in the gym?
That's still being discussed. I asked about that recently because I think that wasn't, that that tender hadn't landed completely that I know of. Um, and that's still a question that's hanging up here. I haven't got the answer, but there has to be bleachers.
Yeah. How do you, how do you sit and watch a basketball game?
Have to have bleachers. And the principal was, Principal Ballsden was talking about that just last week.
In order to be a top tier school, you have to have bleachers.
Right.
And what's the school called again?
It's called, uh, it's called the K to 12 School on Jaspersen Road. I saw the memo today. It's coming in our package tomorrow and, uh, it'll be an agenda item coming up. And, uh, I noticed that the name had kind of changed, yeah.
So what, uh, so what's it say?
It says the K to 12 School in Kingsville, French immersion English in Kingsville.
Well, the board received the suggestions on Tuesday, correct?
It got the, the naming committee ended their work supposedly. We'll see, I've seen it referred back to committee.
Sure.
But, uh, the, um, the naming committee ended on Monday and with two recommendations, and that'll come forward for as the committee recommendations. And as I said at the meeting, I've seen every kind of thing happen. I've seen a five minute meeting, you know, saying, yep, I put that name on the floor, are all those in favor? Good, okay, next item. And I've seen, you know, blood, smoke and tears. And, uh, delegations, full rooms, um, that, those names go out the window. New name amended, something else, whatever, referred back to committee, come back, and the original thing happened, you know? And and everything in between. So, um, I can't predict, I can't predict what's gonna happen. I know that I was thrilled that we got 600 and something submissions, like I'm gonna say 10 years ago, you know, if you've covered school board meetings, it's like and there's a motion to, uh, you know, pretty, pretty.
Yeah, it's pretty dry.
Yeah, pretty dry. And, um, we became above the fold during the pandemic, you know? It was all of a sudden, every household had a concern because it was about childcare and what do I do? And, oh my God, and my kid's falling behind. And all of a sudden, school boards were targeted and became, you know, important and stuff. That has waned off a little bit, you know, but, uh, we'll see.
You know, I.
But naming is hot.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, and and I I think that, um, I think people are concerned because it seems like with some of the other names of schools that sometimes the identity of the community is being, and I'm not, I'm not saying that this is happening, but I do think that there's, there is sentiment that that the identity of the community is being sort of stripped when you don't have names of places in in a high school name, you know?
Yeah, well, there's, there's been a, you know, there's, we we did the naming and renaming policy and regulation. I think twice or three times in the last two or three years. I'm actually, I think, going to be moving to send it back to policy. I don't really like it. I really don't like the regulation. I think it's the policy, the policy's okay, but the regulation and the process. I don't want to be apologist for it, nor do I want to be a complete critic because I think everybody's well meaning. But, um, I think it can be divisive and and not necessarily arrive at something that you're trying to achieve. You know, um, everybody has kids, right?
Yep.
So, some people picked out the name of the kid before, some people wait till the kid is born, you know, and they look at it and say, there's a great pressure. I'm Richard the third, and that must be Richard the fourth, you know, and somebody else says, no, but I want, you know, Steve. You know, I want something else, you know? I remember if we were gonna have a girl, we were gonna have a girl, we were, we picked a family name and we picked, uh, something that was other inventive or whatever, you know, and we had a boy. But, uh, and we didn't know, we didn't, you know, but names are contentious. I've, I've, I, I have to say that when we named David Suzuki, the outrage we got from naming something who was living and from folks in Leamington who had definite opinions about David Suzuki. Uh, and then they were tempered with, oh, my gosh, that's such a fabulous idea. So I'm ready for a lot of political heat. I already have, uh, felt very, very, you know, disrespected and full of joy. And all I can say is that 600 and something submissions, that's remarkable. I I just think it's wonderful to have so many people even interested, you know? At the end of the day, you know, there's gonna be great disappointment and there's gonna be great joy. And, uh, I know that when the kids get in there, when the staff gets in there, it doesn't matter what the name is in a way, but naming can also be important. So.
I think it means something to the community. Like, I do think that.
Yeah. Which community?
The, the Kingsville, Greater Kingsville area.
What's Greater Kingsville? Cause I saw that name and I'm trying to, I, I was trying to talk to a colleague about that today.
Well, I would argue that that maybe the issue, if if we're having a hard time naming a school that has Harrow students and Kingsville students in it together.
And Codham and Leamington. That, to me, that's greater. The school is primarily comprised of students that reside in Kingsville.
Yeah.
Greater encompasses the fact that it's not just Kingsville, that this school does draw from other communities. But then again, some people could argue, yeah, but Harrow is part of Essex. In the grand scheme of things, they pay their taxes to the town of Essex.
Oh, no, they're definitely Essex.
So, but they're, but. Include the name Essex in there.
The, the town of Essex is part, is is part of Essex.
Sure they do.
Because, because a bunch of people sat around a meeting back in the nineties and determined that they felt that every municipality should have waterfront.
Why?
No, and I get, no, really, it should be, Harrow and Kingsville are one, and Codham and and Essex are one.
Oh, I've heard that for a million years. Why is Greater Essex County District School Board greater? Does anybody know?
Cause it's better than all the rest.
I was gonna make that joke.
What makes it greater? It's not Essex County. What is greater?
Windsor?
What is, no, Windsor is the city in the seat of the county of Essex, but what is Greater Essex? Give up?
Yeah.
Pele Island, because they're not in Essex County.
So to me, that's, that's, and I think that's, you know, sitting on the committee.
Where do Pele Island kids go to high school?
We wanted to recognize.
Leamington.
No.
We did, the community, the committee wanted to recognize the fact that it's not just Kingsville students.
Yeah.
You know, but you talk, you talk to staff, you talk to students, and, you know, my daughter's on the committee and and some of her friends talked to, and they talked to people from Harrow and and quite a few of the Harrow kids had looked. We go to Kingsville now. We know we go to Kingsville. We're happy to go to Kingsville. And and to your point, yes.
Unless they go to Villanova.
There's, um,
Yeah.
There's an identity, people who don't have students still take pride in the high school. I know, I know local business owners do a lot for the school, especially the athletic program. And they are, they take pride in that and they take pride in I, in the identity of Kingsville. You're not gonna please everyone. We're not gonna, whatever the name is, you're not gonna please everyone. But the majority of those, over, over half of those 600 that responded had the name Kingsville in there. The majority of the people, even at the committee level, suggested that Kingsville needs to be in there for a variety of reasons. You look around, and I I am not gonna take anything away from the name North Star, but Bell River, Essex, Leamington, Tecumseh, they all have one public high school and it has the community's name in it. It identifies that community. Tillery, if you want to go outside our board.
Bell River doesn't exist by itself anymore, right? Lakeshore does, and St. Anne's is there.
Sure, but St. Anne's is a separate board and Bell River is the only.
Public board, but they have Catholic education, yeah.
Sorry?
They're a public board, but they have Catholic education.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, but it's, it's the Catholic, it's a Catholic board. Like, it's a different school board.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah.
By, by and large, the public board, I mean, it says publicboard.ca on the website, so that's why I'm referring.
Yeah, there's four public boards, that's the thing, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm the one that actually identifies itself as a public board.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
One public board high school.
Yeah.
Right? And it has the name, you can't do it in Windsor. There's, there's four or five publicboard.ca high schools.
Yeah.
In that community.
There used to be a Windsor, but.
But to us, to, to, to me and to the people who've grown up here and have connections with the school and to the, to many of those that don't, the Kingsville identity is is a huge part of it. And yes, there are people in Harrow that this isn't my home, but there are students that, you know, Sue Nurse mentioned a recent graduate, I won't name him because I don't want, he, he can speak for himself, but the pride he took in being a Kingsville Cavalier was immense.
And and, you know, I think I had that as a Waukesha Tartan, you know, and I think, uh, that, you know, well, all of us do. Formative years, um, make us identify, especially when you're in adolescence. Elementary, yes, yes, you do. But especially adolescents, you know, you take that, um, I'm gonna say extracurricular more than even curricular, you know, those team things. You root, you become tribal, you know, you, uh, that's a sense of belonging, all of that. But the fact is, Kingsville District High School is closing.
That's fine.
Yeah, and it won't ever be Kingsville District High School anymore.
It's fine.
Yeah.
It's just a matter of.
And that's a grieving process that everybody has to go through. And it's tough. I, it's tough, believe me. I've seen Low close, Forster close, Shawnee close, Monarch close. Every one of those schools were dear, dear, dear schools.
Harrow. But I would argue.
Harrow High School closing and the way it closed, you know?
I, I, I would argue though, Julia, that
Really tough and changes.
A school's not closing, a building is closing.
Well, yeah, the building's closing.
Scott Stannleber will agree with that point because he made it very clear that it's just a building.
That name, that name is closing though. Like, that's not on the list. I doubt if Kingsville District High School will come forward as a, as a.
It didn't, Kingsville District Academy did though. That was one of the suggestions.
Which, which is fitting. Well, and it can't be high school because obviously it could be public school, Kingsville District.
No, it has to be Academy.
People den, generally don't graduate from grade 12 on a resume to get into university college, different apprenticeships. When they see public school, it takes an explanation that it's a, you know, like you have a diploma that goes with it. The instant recognition is not there that it's high school when you say public.
So it's like some elitist.
Yeah, that, that criticism is there and I've, I've heard that, I've read it and I have really terrible notes sent to me about that. And I, I really get that point. And, uh, it translates well into, uh, French English. There, I looked at all kinds of different definitions and there's really fitting definitions.
And I, I did say.
Google search, you gotta, you gotta kind of find, you know, 10 different ones.
But I've said, I am willing to concede the academy part. Like personally, I'm willing to concede academy.
Yeah.
My personal feeling is that Kingsville needs to be in the name.
I was not a fan when it was TVA, uh, I've kind of hoped that, you know, but the thing is, it's not just K to 12. I mean, Westview Freedom Academy is, is a high school and it's called Westview Freedom Academy. It's not a K to 12. But, uh, the regulation says there's a couple of choices that we have on the regulation. You know, um, and academy was chosen, like even with the explanation, if you wanted to check, check district school, nobody picked up on it. So, well, we'll see what that lands. I don't know where it's gonna land, but, um, I'm not against academy. Now, I was at one point.
I'm hopeful it's one of the two suggestions that the committee put forth, right? And it, it, it seems to be the happy medium between the, the school board.
Happy to whom?
Happy medium between an academy and what the community has in sentiment with regards to it being the name of the town in.
Where, where, where it's located.
Located, right? You know, we're not looking at something that's an animal or fauna or flora that has absolutely no reference to this area, other than the fact that it might be indigenous to this area or it might not, you know, so.
Yeah, you didn't want that.
We don't want that.
Yeah. I think I got your message real clear. Yeah. And, uh, it's a well, um, you know, popular opinion.
Well, because when, when.
Tecumseh Vista wasn't popular.
But it still says Tecumseh, still gives you a region of, of area, right?
You know where it is.
Right.
Where you're coming from. You go away, you represent your school academically or athletic.
Tournament in, in Lampton County.
Yeah, and it, there's a, a big, I know, uh, I recognize a big athletic team. Instant recognition, don't want to say more in one, two sentences thing. I, and I, I get that. It's a shorthand for, oh, this is where the school is. You know us, you know, and there's a reputation and a legacy and all that attached to it. You know, do people in Scarborough at Jack Minor Public School know who Jack Minor is at their school? Yeah. Do they live in the town? No.
With respect, we don't know their schools either. It's not, that's not the sentiment that we're trying to, to exude, right?
No, I understand the sentiment. And what I'm saying is they also know, but they don't have to live there and they don't have to be cited there. But do you, like, it all depends what your goal is. As a school board with 70 facilities and it's teaching and learning from infants now and childcare, all the way to graduation and all the staff, to have something that, um, uh, can make everybody proud in the, in the whole building is a challenge.
You're wrapping, you're wrapping up the episode so nicely.
Well, but no, but it's.
You're right. You're right. And that's the, that's the fundamentals of the board. It's the overall goal is to make sure that.
It's a district decision.
Right. And, and ultimately, as long as that is there.
Well, and and I, I think that's part of, of where some of the naming issues stem from completely is the fact that no matter which community, uh, which school is, is, um, being voted on, there's only one person around that table that's from the community that is voting on that name. And, and so it's, you come into a situation where the majority of the people, and actually, I forget the makeup of the board now. I apologize. It's evened out, right?
There are 10, there's, no, no, there's six in the city and four in the county, but there are people that, we've had Jessica Sartori, she, you know, her kids went to KPS and then they moved to the city. I mean, there's lots of connections to, you know, Kim McKinley's, her, you know, family's from Harrow. Like, people have connections to the county and the city. When I said I went to Waukesha, I went to Waukesha.
So would it be safe to say that the majority of the people that will decide the name of the school don't have connections to Kingsville?
Don't have connections to Kingsville or to the catchment area of the school.
To the catchment area of the school. My apologies.
You know what? I, I, I never asked about that. I'd have to think about that. Uh, I don't know. Um, certainly, I know trustee Armstrong, you know, she gets elected on Pele Island and, uh, Leamington, she taught in Kingsville schools and Harrow schools and Essex, I think, Leamington certainly. I think, I think she did the whole county. Yeah, there, there will be people that have connections to the county. I don't know if that's, I, I want to say something too. I might be elected in a certain area, but it's not a council. We don't, we don't have constituents. There's not, the word constituent doesn't happen in the Education Act. You're a board of 10. You have to come together and make decisions for a board. All the facilities, all the kids, all the staffing, everybody.
Yeah, but how many years is the city reps stuck it to the county reps? Anyway, that's an. No, but we, no, but we've seen that happen many times.
Opinion. And you know what? While there are six and there are four, that's the way we look. When we, we have an opportunity every four years to change electoral districts, et cetera, and we look at populations, and it's been substantiated that it aligns with wards and cities.
I guess, I guess.
Per capita kind of density.
My point with that facetious comment was simply, I wish they were all as open minded as you are, that they all looked at it that way, because I don't think they do. I think a lot of them look at it and say.
Ones, like, I'm, I've been elected seven times, like, seven different boards, seven completely different boards. You know, at our last provincial election and the one before, we had 40% and 50% turnover of all trustees in the province.
I've got one more quick comment regarding the name.
And then we'll wrap it up.
Okay, so I guess I look at it this way too, is my daughter explored the IB program at Leamington. She went to the open house. They gave her a free pair of Leamington Lion socks. I thought they looked sharp. Living in Kingsville, going to Kingsville District High School, graduating from Kingsville District High School, having a wife teach at Kingsville District High School, had my daughter decided to become a Leamington Lion. Fantastic. I don't live in Leamington. And this, sure, this is just my opinion, but I would have supported her and I would have supported that school. Because that's where she chose to go. And you know what? At the end of the day, it says Leamington, fine. You know, there's a lot of people from outside Kingsville whose students go here who think that too. They support Kingsville. They, because.
People in Codham, people in Codham, people, uh, if they're in the English stream, they go to Essex District High School. If they go to the French immersion, they go to KPS.
Right.
They live in Kingsville, but are they affiliated, you, you know, you're talking about how when the amalgamations came and everything else, if it was it this way, was it this way? Waterfront versus, you know, I mean, where do you shop? I always ask, where do you shop? Well, you know, there are people in Harrow, they shop. Well, you know, there are people in Harrow, they shop in Amherst because they're closer to Malden and Amherst. That's the way they go, you know? If you're the roof inside, I go to Leamington. If you go to, you know, we all have different patterns and affiliations and, and loyalties and all that. I think now with the, the way our roads are, with the way our connectedness, our density of, you know, just the way things are, we commute more, we mix more. You know, uh, I, I think that yes, of course you're going to support your kid. You're going to support your kid where they are. And, and I, I like to think of it not only, you know, not only in competitive ways. I want to recognize that also in our, in our area, we have a lot of Anabaptists, you know, that come to the public board. We have a lot of, uh, I think seven, eight different types of Mennonite churches, you know, and, and Anabaptists in our area. And they're not really big on competition. They don't really like getting involved in competition and they still come to us. And they have a right to have their culture and, um, you know, uh, their ability to, uh, not see everything as only in competitive sports or only in competitive, whatever it is, academic things, whatever it is. And so I'm mindful of that too. I'm mindful of that, um, because in our area, particularly in my area, Leamington too, but Harrow all the way to, to Kingsville, I'm always mindful of that to make sure that, um, you know, all of our folks get a graduation. And don't necessarily have to engage in athletics and other competitive things.
Well.
All I can say is thank God they don't name condo buildings.
Oh, boy.
My God.
Oh, boy.
They all get a vote.
Yeah. If it wasn't another hot button topic, it was condos and then it's the school. Now, Julia, thank you for.
And wish me luck.
Yeah, good luck.
Good luck.
It's going to be, you're, you're in for the final stretch here before everything happens, right? Hopefully the naming, uh, decision and the announcement comes soon and we can all criticize and or celebrate, depending on what other side of the coin you fall on. But September, big deal. Um, I'm, I'm excited.
I'm excited.
Our, our youngest are attending in the fall for the first grade nine class and.
Oh, okay.
Well, your youngest.
My youngest. Yeah, sorry.
Well, what a great.
Why don't be part of the first graduate class of the new school?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What a great thing, you know? I mean, that's exciting. It's going to be lovely. I, I, I think when we see it, uh, like anything, we're going to say, I wish they would have done whatever, but they go, ooh, it's an, you know, I'm happy with it. I'm happy with it. I can't wait to see it in the next few weeks with my, uh, gear on and see how the progress is, but it looks great.
Can't wait for the.
HVAC is in.
Can't wait for the mascot and or school colors discussion. Thank you, Julia.
Trustees don't do that. Trustees don't do that.
Thanks, Julia.
We just pray over it.
No, it's the Catholic board.
Had to take a shot. Oh.
Everybody does.
Again, thank you for the time tonight, Julia.
Thank you so much for the discussion.
And, uh, yeah, again, good luck. And, uh, like I said, everybody's all excited for September.